Alright, what's going on tunes? Welcome to Night City Council. Night City Council is in session. I am John John the Wise and I got with me the illustrious Mayor of Balance Town himself, James Hut. How are you, James?
I'm doing great, John John. How are you doing?
I'm doing great.
How are you doing? You alright?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We got through the hurricake. It was no big deal over here. Everything is safe. Everything is fine. Just a lot of rain. Got the day off. So overall, it's a positive over here.
We're just glad you're okay.
Thank you. I appreciate it. But we have a big show today because there's a lot of stuff to talk about. A lot of stuff. Gen Con just happened. Danger Gal just released. I got the book right here. We haven't talked about that. And there's also really cool Gen Con announcements that we want to talk about. But before we get into any of that, James, why don't you tell us about what you got going on with you?
Okay, so before we get into all of the Tal Saurian things you no doubt clicked on this video for, James Hut Games, we have a newsletter and we're working on a horror game called What Happened in Sugar Worm Valley? And that one's coming along right along, it turns out. If you join the newsletter at jameshutgames.com, you get an early copy to read through, you know, maybe playtest if you want. It is almost feature complete. I got about five more pages to write in there and that buddy's done. Art's coming in and it's looking fantastic. Other than that, I stayed up very late one night in the past week and I made a playing card sized tabletop role playing game. It uses these dice that only have an X on one side of them. And you can make them with any six sided die, just by using white out on all of the pips that aren't on the five. And it's basically, what's the minimum that I can do and play a tabletop role playing game? So it's for, I mean, maybe you've got some kids that you want to introduce for the very first time into the hobby. In a way that's fun and still fully featured as a game. You don't want to dumb things down all the way. You want them to have a full game that works at that minor amount of rules needed. Anyway, so that's called Glance, because when you roll the dice, you know at a glance if you succeeded or failed without any math. And the rules for that will be in the newsletter this month and I'll put them in the newsletter in other months, but you want it right now, right? So join the newsletter. It'll be in the description, won't it?
Yeah, of course.
Good, good.
Come on, I've been doing this a little while now.
Alright, so it'll be in the description. So go there and the newsletter goes out at the end of this week. So you got like three days to do it. Anyway, let's, let's crack on with the actually.
Yeah, no, talking about, yeah, well, Glance is a great RPG. I got to take a look at. It's a nice little pocket RPG. I think that's what the kids call them nowadays. Something that you could just have in your pocket, pull it out and it's like you're playing right away. I think it would be really good for car rides. You know what I mean? Because you don't need a lot of stuff and that's like the whole idea of it. But yeah, we'll talk about it once it comes out. I think you guys, if you're into those pocket RPGs, it's one of, one of those good ones out there. So.
Yeah, I sent him an early copy.
Yeah, I got, you know, I get the cool stuff. I get the cool stuff, you know what I mean? James, why don't you tell us about your event at Gen Con? How it was? How did it go? You running games?
Gen Con this year was wild and crazy. It was the biggest Gen Con of all time. So if anybody's thinking about, are we back from the, the no-no time? Yes, we're fully back from the no-no time in terms of the amount of people that are showing up to Gen Cons. Yep. It's bigger than it's ever been and it totally felt like it. There was like, I mean, there was, there was drama. There was intrigue. Somebody stole $30,000 of Magic Gathering.
And it turns out they were not the best thieves.
I mean, they got the beginning of Ocean's Eleven, but they didn't get the end of Ocean's Eleven.
Yeah, the, the beginning where you take the stuff, they accomplish that, but,
Right, right, right.
But to not get caught, that's another issue.
And can I just say, that is the most cyberpunk thing to happen during the, during the convention was that activity.
It's a dystopian future. Is that considered grand theft?
That's your free scream sheet for the Elf Lines Online Trading Card Game. Just that happens. Just look up the news for it and just, put it in Night City and there you go. You got a free adventure.
It's interesting because it could be grand theft, right? Because if like you decide to like, you know, go through each pack and check each card, there could be, what if the Lord of the Rings One Ring was in there? It's not. Post Malone has it. But what if it was in there, dude?
I, you know, I'm going to reveal how nerdy I, I am. I, I know there was absolutely zero chance that that would have occurred. I think it was one of their masters set. I don't follow magic as much as I used to. It's gotten a little too expensive. But anyway, the convention was massive. It was giant. There were so many people there, so many fans, awesome people to talk to. I want to say thank you to everyone who came up and said hi. And everyone who, you know, came up and, a lot of people came up and said very nice things and I'm very grateful for them, first off.
You guys rock.
And I think a lot of people had, it was the first show that a lot of people had, they'd played Red and then they showed up to the show. So it was a lot of people's first time going to, getting to interact with us after post-playing the game. You know what I mean?
Yeah, sometimes that's the best part. That's the best part is after the game, the discussion after the game. Like you don't want to miss out on that one hour after the game, but having like a whole day to talk about it, that's great.
Yeah, it was great. And I ran a lot of games. I got to run my yearly Elf Lines Online game, which is fun. This one was very, very fun. I, I integrated the, the dating into it. So they, there was, there was dating and then there was Elf Lines Online and it was great. And there was gang activity. It was, it was, it was a raucous time.
Yeah, that's, that's amazing. I think a lot of people can relate with trying to find a girlfriend on WoW.
Yeah, yeah. It was, it was more of like, hey, you're really cool. I hear you like to, this is your hobby, you know? Can I try it? And you like say no.
Yeah.
And then they start having a bad experience. You gotta stand up for, I don't know. It was fun. It was fun. I got, I got to, you know, roleplay the, the incredible lack of empathy that PKing exudes.
So you ran a bunch of games?
Yes, I ran a bunch of games. I ran around the Witcher. I ran a lot of Cyberpunk. I had a great time.
That's awesome.
We were testing out some of the features from at other tables, not mine. Because, you know, me testing my own rules is kind of, you lose the point of playtesting it at a certain point when you get the game designer playtesting their own game design. It's just called playing at that point. Anyway, we were playtesting new rules for the future Edgerunners product.
Which we will be talking about. That's one of the announcements shortly we will be talking about.
And everybody seemed to be having a lot of fun with those.
Yeah. Did you get to play any Combat Zone? I know their booth was nearby, right?
I was pretty wall to wall. We were pretty, we were pretty, as a company, everybody was wall to wall for this show. I think it was 80,000 people. Yeah, we had our plates full the whole time. I did not get to. But I heard a lot of smiles and laughs from the area. I'm assuming that it went real well.
Yeah.
And you played it. What do you, what do you think of it?
Dude, I gotta say, for those of you, exactly, you know, and those of you that have been living under a cyber rock and don't know what Combat Zone is, it is the new game by Monster Fight Club. It is Cyberpunk Red Combat Zone and it's got a bunch of cyberpunk gangs in them, just exactly from this Danger Gal dossier.
I was about to say, and they're all also, they also have backstories in Danger Gal dossier. So it's a full, it fully integrates.
It's a super integration. In my last video, I was actually talking about, hey, you know, if you get into Combat Zone and if you're not really into it, you like just bought yourself a bunch of minis. So who cares? And then now you get this book that goes with it. And in the book is the one-to-one models, the exact same models and you can have them as characters in your game, the exact models. So cool.
I, I think that was really cool. I don't think a lot of other people have done that.
No, I've never seen something like that before. So I was like pleasantly surprised because I'm all in on this. I went all in on the Kickstarter. I have all but two gangs. I got all the special edition models and everything. And I gotta say, man, it's a really fun game. My wife, who has zero experience in wargaming, gaming, nothing. She doesn't play any kind of gaming or anything, but she's like, look, if I don't have to roleplay, I'll play. Because she's not into the roleplay.
Fair enough.
Yeah, which I said, that's fine. You don't have to roleplay. It's a war game. You don't have to roleplay anything. So she played, she's having a blast. We're doing a full-on campaign. She's kicked my ass. I think we're at four-two. She's won, no, four-three. She's won four games. I've won three games. Dude, it's insane. It's, that, that just shows you, anybody can play the game and be good at it. You know, she beat me fair and square in all those games.
I was just about to say, because you got three games on her. That's why we know anybody can win.
Exactly. Well done. Alright. It's enough. She like took out her phone and was like recording me and I'm like, alright, look, you won. Yeah, you got it. You won.
Oh, wow.
She's like, I beat him. I beat him.
I thought you can tell if someone's really happy that they won.
Yeah, yeah. My wife will take any chance to gloat over my, over victory over me. So it's,
Fantastic.
Yeah, we're, we're good friends, as it should be. But it's fun, dude. It's a lot of fun. The models are great. It's easy to pick up the rules. You can play two ways. There's like the one-off, like your gang versus my gang. But that's just scratching the surface, dude. It's like doing a one-shot of cyberpunk. Like that's fun. It's cool. But the real juice is from the campaign. You know, like playing a long-form campaign and it's the same with Combat Zone. In between matches, you upgrade your dudes. You get like more access to like better gear. And there is stuff from the core rulebook, like the Helix Tsunami Arms Helix thing is in there. That's like a piece of gear, you know, there's like legit stuff from, from the lore and the actual book. So if you're a fan of cyberpunk.
I will say, I really like the movement system. The red, yellow, green, simple color-coded movement system. I think that's a standout part of the game.
Yeah, it is.
Of ease of, ease of play and honestly, you still get all of the, the weighty depth of the, of the war game with it. The fact that the ruler, you know, the thing that scares people, the ruler scares people from playing Warhammer. The thing that scares people has been turned into this really cool object of play that I think is, it's quite, quite ingenious.
Yeah, it's, we were actually having a chat yesterday about like, you know, games having like their own dice and then you lose those dice and then you're like, oh, well, I guess I gotta like go on eBay and try to find those dice. Well, this,
I'm sorry for while you're in mortal danger due to a natural disaster being like, you know what I don't like? When games send you dice that you might lose.
Yeah, I don't like, that is a, that is a big problem. I agreed with you. But in this game,
By the way, I hope, I hope you're alright and your family is okay.
We're devastated. The roads are broken. But you know what? You got a, you got a point. But the dice are, they have like their own dice with like their own, you know, the critical is the highest number and the fail is the lowest number and it is a different symbol than what you would see. But at the end of the day, it's a D12, D8, D10, D6. What else am I missing? I think those are the ones. It's those dice. Like you can use any one of those dice to play the game. And the ruler might look like a fancy ruler, but it's really three inches, seven inches, 12 inches.
And you could get a normal ruler and mark those out. That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. Everything should be able to be made
Yeah.
in your garage if you're so inclined, or if you lose the fancy ruler.
Yeah, and you could do quarters, nickels, dimes, or quarter nickel pennies for the tokens. Like it's super easy to do that as well. But yeah, like I'm having a blast. I'm printing terrain off my printer. I'm, I'm painting like left and right. I'm like painting like crazy, dude, trying to get everything done. Because I'm going to have like a local kind of thing going on where I'm going to run some demos for people. There is a pretty big wargaming community locally here, so.
That's good.
Give people a shot. Check it out. But other than that, why don't we get into some of the announcements that you guys gave?
What we talked about at Gen Con?
Yeah, because there's some really cool stuff here. Alright, so here we go. Here's the announcements on Gen Con. First of all, for Danger, the, excuse me, I'm gonna try that again.
Gang, Gangel?
The Danger Gal, the Danger Gal dossier. You guys will be having a DLC that comes out with it. It already came out.
It already came out. Danger Gal Plus.
That's it. Danger Gal Plus came out. And then there will be a Roll20 VTT PDF bundle on Drive Thru RPG, which is going to be really awesome. For those of you that play Roll20 and I think that's super worth it. Also remember that if you go to a store that is part of the bits and mortar program, when you buy the physical book, they can give you the PDF for free.
Oh, yeah. You gotta do.
It's good stuff. But other than that, let's talk about some of the Cyberpunk Red announcements. We got the Cyberpunk Red, or sorry, Cyberpunk Edgerunners Mission Kit. A standalone box set similar to the Jump Start Kit, allowing you to play in the time of Cyberpunk Edgerunners slash Cyberpunk 2077.
Oh, yeah?
Which is something that a lot of folks have been talking about. They want a 2077 supplement. They want Edgerunners. They want David in their game. So what can you tell us about this?
So the Edgerunners Mission Kit is, so first off, the big announcement that I'm surprised you didn't just say is that we got art from Studio Trigger.
Oh, I didn't see that.
Brand new art from Studio Trigger.
No way, dude.
Our box set. That's right. It's gonna be kind of cool. I'm still blown away by the fact that we got that, but we did.
Wild, dude. That's such a masterpiece of anime. We talked about it so much already.
Yeah, it's like, it's an artist that you can't book unless they're like, would you like this? They come to you. They, at a certain point, we weren't even sure we could get it and they were like, oh, actually, we would like to do it. And then they're like, okay.
What a compliment.
Thank you. Anyway, so very excited for that. It's gonna have an adventure in it. Called The Jacket, I think is really cool. And I can't say more about that, except that you're gonna get to experience a new story in the 76 time period and it will correlate with the anime. And it happens after the anime. So that's cool. Other fun things. There will be in the rules, one, there's going to be rules for playing in 76. It's not going to be the full rules for playing in that time period because that's in a future product. That we haven't announced, but you know, we're eventually gonna do it. Come on. What I'm saying is it's what you need to get started and play in your Red campaign in that time period, should you wish. There's a guide in the back and everything in that book, essentially you can do in 45 if you wish. You can port it back. You can port, you can port 45 forward. It's meant to be a tool. Use it how you wish. But expect to get the baseline of what is necessary to do that. It won't be everything, but it will be enough. Anyway, that's, that's big.
Very big, very big.
And other than that, we are kind of scant on the details of what is going in it. But I mean, well, now you know you got beautiful art that you're going to be able to use it to convert your game into that time period to get started. And you know, there's going to be a banger adventure. So I think you know enough. If you, you probably know if you want to get it or not, just from that. But I know I don't have to sell John John on this.
No, no, I'm, I'm going to be the first one to pick it up. I mean, I pick up everything from my local shop, anything you guys release. But it also says here, which I think you were alluding to, is the pre-generated characters will be designed by Hiro Yuki, Hiro Yuki Imaishi, the director of Cyberpunk Edgerunners himself.
Yes, I meant by that.
Yeah.
And very cool, very cool.
Super cool. I mean, you can't ask for anything better than that. Other than the Edgerunners Mission Kit, which we're all excited about, I'm sure we'll hear more of it soon. The next book in the Cyberpunk Red line is Tales of the Red Forlorn Hope. And I want to apologize to whoever was out there. I don't know if it was on Reddit or where. And I said, well, they just released a mission book, so it's, you know, another mission book is probably on the back burner. Well, no, I was incorrect. Because there is another mission book coming out. So what can you tell us about this one?
Okay, so you're right. We just did do a mission book and it was really cool and people really liked it. I liked it. Which was important to me. Who's asking me? Well, I thought, no. So anyway, that book was really cool because it had a bunch of different adventures all over the, all over Night City, a bunch of one-shots. This book is the one where you go, I want them all connected into a campaign. I want one campaign, a campaign book. This is our campaign book. I think it's, it has the potential to be the you gotta get it campaign of the edition. We've got some amazing writers. I believe the announced one in particular.
Yeah.
That shall be, that we should probably talk about right now.
Yeah, I'll read them off if you'd like, from top to the bottom. Eddie Webb. Chris Spivey, I'm sorry, Spivey, Spivey?
Spivey, Spivey.
Spivey, Linda Evans, we all know her, Tracy Hearn, AKA Miss Magitec. Love them. Paris Aerosmith, AKA The No Latency Man Himself. Love him too. Francis Stewart and Melissa Wong, friend of the show, Melissa Wong.
Yeah, Melissa Wong, coming back.
Got it. Alumni of the show.
So we've got like really good writers on this one and they're gonna all collaborate to tell this awesome connected story. That's why I'm super excited for it. And you know, I'll be coming in to make sure that all the rules fit right at the end. So don't worry. I'm, I'm working on it.
Yeah.
But most of, most of what I do is just reading, reading in awe at their fantastic stuff that we get in from outside. Anyway, and of course, you know, Eddie Webb coming back to Cyberpunk.
Huge, huge.
That's huge.
Very big. So, you know,
He, of course, you may not know, but he invented RSIKA. That was him. So he's coming back. We're gonna get him. Super excited.
Yeah, and it's great because the Forlorn, the Forlorn Hope is a classic 2020 era bar. So it's great to see, you know, where is it now in the red? There is a small adventure, I think a one-shot. I don't know if, did Mike run it for the Team Monster Crew? The Forlorn Hope was in it, but I think that was just his like, kind of like brainchild, like, you know, comfortable thing that he was with, but nothing in writing really. I'll have to check, but anyway, I'm sure someone in the comments will let me know I'm wrong.
I guess one of the cool things is in 2020, there's a campaign book that's sort of set in the Forlorn Hope. And if in 2045, there's the same thing, theoretically, you could play a almost connected story across the ages if you really wanted to.
Yeah.
And I think it's super cool to see that, that level of timeline connection in a science fiction property because you don't see it very often. That's what's, I guess that's one thing that's really unique about this.
Yeah. Yeah, the Forlorn Hope is one of those staple places like, you know, the afterlife and stuff like that in Night City. And it's a merc bar, which almost everybody that ever plays Cyberpunk is playing a merc, some kind of merc, you know? So it's like the perfect place for the players to play in. So yeah, we're super excited for all that. That's a lot of stuff coming out. For some reason, I seem to think that you guys were just gonna release one other thing this year and that was it. But it looks like you guys have been working real hard back there, trying to make some good stuff.
We're, we're trying to figure it out.
Yeah, well, we appreciate it. Other things we'll mention here, you know, is Cody is working on a secret new line of game, brand new. And it will be announced on Wednesday. So that's two days from when we're recording. You guys are probably gonna see this after it's announced.
Probably see it by now. There were QR codes given out in secret at, at Gen Con. So if you got one of those, scan it, figure it out. Maybe somebody in the, maybe somebody in the comments will post a link to the, wherever that goes. I don't even know where it goes. Who knows where it goes? It's, it's a, it's a whole big marketing trick and oh, man, are you gonna fall for it? Oh, boy. Although, to be honest, Cody has been Cody privately, you and me and whoever else watches.
And everyone else that watches.
Who knows? Between you, Cody has been working on this in his head since he was like 13.
Oh, wait, is it, is it the thing that? Okay.
Interrupting me. How dare you? So this is, this is his, this is like his childhood dream.
Yeah, that's sick.
Seeing him working on this in the office, he's, he's happy every day. He's, he's just very excited for this and it makes me super excited for other people to learn about it. Because I know about it and it's really cool. It's really cool.
If it's what I think it is, and I hope it is, then I'm su- super excited for it too, because I was one of the people that told him that he has to do this.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm sure they'll all know by the time this comes out anyways and this will seem like a whole big tease for nothing.
And we'll have Cody come on and he'll talk with us all about.
I'm sure he would love to do that.
So, so there's that, the secret project from Cody Ponsmith. We also have Five by Infinity, AKA 5XI. It will feature smaller, more independent games, including bringing back some old favorites, some new experiments. And sharing creator-owned ideas. Our first game in the line will be Fossilized Violence, a bloody dinosaur-based TTRPG.
So I got promoted. And that's my line. That's the line that I'm running for Tal. So that's, that, those are all gonna be my fault when they come out. And I am fan, I am very excited to, to move forward with those. Fossilized Violence is gonna be the first one out. It's a game about dinosaurs and violence. And surviving in a world owned by dinosaurs, sort of controlled by dinosaurs. Where humanity is in its infancy in the cradle, as it were. And you get to fight the war that never was, humans versus dinosaurs for control of the planet.
Wow.
Anyway, I, I am very excited for that one. We will have several amazing announcements for that coming up. But for now, you know, get, get excited to fight some dinos. It does not use interlock. It uses something brand new.
Interesting. You guys really are going new.
Oh, it's new, new.
New, new, new.
It's new, new. Now, Five by I is gonna be aligned with new things.
Sweet.
Re-releasing classics. Well, we'll get to that. And working with awesome creator-owned IP. But if you happen to be an awesome creator, email me.
Yeah.
Know how to do that?
Yep, that was, this was something that was kind of,
In the middle of this podcast, but you should know how to find me?
Yeah, you can find them.
If you really are that good.
Send them a postcard.
Oh, yeah. Anyway, so that's, that's Five by I for now. Of course, we'll, I'm gonna tactically wait to say even more awesome things until after Cody gets to announce the really awesome. Cody gets to announce the really awesome thing on Wednesday.
Very good, very good. All right, all right, folks, let's talk about Danger Gal Dossier Plus. Extra content for Danger, Danger Gal Dossier. Beautiful artwork, just like the one that you see right here next to me. What can you tell us about this? What do we got in here?
So um, Danger Gal Dossier Plus is a uh, every time we release a book, like a big book. Um, we include a plus DLC, which is the name of the book and then plus. Like this. Um, anyway, um, the simple.
It's, it's a pattern for sure. We see it.
Pattern. We, okay, good. Um, and uh. This one is full of the stuff that didn't get in to Danger Gal dossier, not because it wasn't good. It's just we have to hit page count. And in order to hit page count, sometimes we have to cut stuff we really like. Um, and that's what these pluses are. Um. One of the really cool things, um, so I'm gonna break down what's in here. The first thing that's in here is plot hooks. There's like three plot hooks for every faction in here. Um, so. Mini, mini, think of them as micro scream sheets. Couple of sentences gets you all the way you need to go. I could run that campaign. Um, or get you started. Um, so if you want to introduce any of the factions. From Danger Gal dossier in an adventure, this is a good place to assert that. Uh, we were gonna do this cool sidebar thing, but then it did not fit into the layout. Um, so here it is. A couple of more things is in here. Uh, let me, let me just tab on over. Um, couple of more things. Uh, there are. A couple of uh, characters that didn't make the cut because certain. Uh, certain sections need to end on an even numbered page, not an odd numbered page. Uh, basically, we missed one of the bozos, for example, named Organ Grinder. So if you want to know about Organ Grinder, he's in here. Um, there is this mini. There are. There you go. He's got a mini too, so we couldn't leave him out. Cause then we couldn't say that everything has a mini, and it does. Um. So if you want to get Organ Grinder, you gotta get Danger Gal Dossier Plus. Uh, there's also some stuff that spoilers for the adventure in there. Um, that's extra moocs from that adventure, or for that adventure, so um, be careful. Uh, and um. Oh yes, at the end is every single thing from Danger Gal dossier. All the, all the people um, cut out into little circles for their faces. Which, if you play a virtual tabletop, you'd know. These are little character tokens. Use them as you wish. Uh, might I suggest a way to use them on your physical table? Now, if you are a long time listener of this podcast, you will know what I'm about to say. Go to a coin collecting store and pretend like you collect coins, so they don't suspect a thing. Um, go to the coin collector behind the uh, counter and ask for the highest quality. Quarter coin capsules, quarter-sized coin capsules you can get. When you print out this document and you cut out this little circles, all perfectly, you'll notice they're suspiciously quarter-shaped. Or at least they should be. Um, close enough. Um, and uh, you cut them out, you put them, put the coin in. You put the cool cutout head in that you've, you know, printed out. Then you close it up in that coin capsule and you now have a high-quality, weighty game piece. With nice art on it, ready to play. Um, in your physical game. Um, you might use this technique to play any number of games. Uh, without owning their miniatures. However. You know, that their, the miniatures are also fantastic, so please, if you want some minis. You know, you need to go to Monster Fight Club to get them. Um, so that's a cool thing in the back here. Uh, and uh, yeah, it's really everybody. It's like three full pages of just circle faces.
Yeah.
Circle face cutouts.
Which is a lot. It's a lot of tokens, a lot, a lot of tokens.
Yeah, a lot of tokens for free. Um, anyway, uh, so that's Danger Gal Dossier Plus. It's. You know, in, enjoy it as a gift to celebrate the uh, new book coming out and uh, the. Uh, just another month in Cyberpunk land.
Yeah, we greatly appreciate that. Uh, there's uh, I do have to mention one of the bo- the characters are bodies. Which is cool. Um, definitely spoilers for those adventures, but I remember seeing that.
Tried to not, yeah, they're bodies, they're bodies there and whose bodies they are. Technically spoiler, but um.
Yeah, if you s- if you don't want to see whose bodies they are, then don't look in this DLC, but or just skip the last few pages.
Look at the, you can look at the first few pages and then once you see the warning label, you can stop and skip to the uh. Skip to the tokens in the end if you're interested.
Yeah, but for those of you that don't know, these bodies are actually miniatures too, like you can, there are, I have the miniatures. And I was like, oh, cool, there's a name behind the miniature.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so that's cool. Um, uh, I really like the plot points. It's great to just have, um, even if um. You know, like you can introduce these characters in your game and if you want to have like a side quest be available. It's great to have these plot hooks. It's just something to throw at your players. It's extra filler, but it's actually filler that has substance. You know, if the players are like, oh, that sounds interesting, well, it's actually a thing. You can do it, you know, it's not just like some throwaway NPC line. Uh, like for example, I'll do the bozo's one here. Uh, Big Top, Big Money, video footage of Big Top using, this is a bozo guy. Using a Militech tactical umbrella in some unspeakable ways has hit the data pool. And the mega corp isn't happy to see their brand associated with the killer clown. They're willing to pay through the nose to make sure Big Top is taken down publicly using Militech gear. So how do you introduce that to your players when they meet Big Top? Big Top could be like mocking Militech. As he's, you know, telling the players like boasting about it. Oh yeah, Militech wants to see me dead and they'll pay through the nose. Especially if it's Militech gear. And then your players are sitting there and they're like, I have a Militech shotgun. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
So it's like a way to like, connect your players to the NPC, have a little backstory. And have a little side quest kind of action going on in there. And also I've been playing a lot of Baldur's Gate, Baldur's Gate 3, so that's been like inspiring the crap out of me, dude.
I have, I have been waiting for it on PS5.
Oh my god, it's my, one of the best games I've ever made.
Computer isn't strong enough.
Oh man, you gotta play it.
The computer that's for word processing and writing more Cyberpunk for you, so.
You're busy. All right, well, that's it for Danger Gal Dossier Plus. Let's talk about. Con apps, uh, sorry, corporate con apps and studio apartments, a DLC about living in Night City. Tell us about it.
So uh, this is the sequel to uh. Cube Hotels, uh, something, something. Um, this is the sequel to cargo containers in Cube Hotels. So this is the second in the series of uh, places you can live in Night City. Um, this one, uh, you know, we, we went with a low price, now we're going up to the next one. And handling the alternate start that corporates get. So um. Just like the other uh DLC, the first page, um, you know, after we talk about the um. After we show the old picture of Silverhand Studios to get you, get your juices flowing. Uh, the page after that is another lovely map of where all these places are that are further discussed in Night City. Um, this uh DLC has twenty new locations in it. Uh, I think twenty new locations pairs really well with like the a hundred plus people in Danger Gal dossier. Now you got people, you have places, and oh gosh, if you got Black Chrome, do you have things? Um, people, places and things, my gosh, that's the full gamut. Um, anyway. Um, but these, uh, these things, there's ten cargo containers, sorry, there's ten studio apartments. And there's ten corporate con apps. Um, if you play a corporate, uh, this is gonna be, oh, that's where I live. And I know, cause I work for Militech. And that's the only one they listed. Well, there are other places that Militech uh, people live, don't worry. Um, this is just. The canon one that I'm giving you right now. Um, and there's one for each of the big new um, mega corps we're focusing on in this edition. Uh, the ones that get called out, you know, there's a Girafa. Uh, one, there's a Sawboil and Petrochem one, which is uh, interestingly enough, the same one. Uh, it turns out that even though they hate each other so much, uh, they have to share housing. Um, even though they hate each other, which is a, which is a lovely trope that you get to play up as much as you want. Don't use my elevator. Uh, the tennis courts are ours on Tuesdays. Um, you know, all, all manner of pettiness gets to be there because they hate each other and they're very petty about it.
Yeah, if you thought it was, it was bad to have a bad neighbor now, just imagine a bad neighbor in the world of Cyberpunk.
As someone brought up to me, isn't this just the left Twix and the right Twix factory? And I'm like, yeah, but.
Oh, that's great.
But with different names.
So on top of the uh, con apps and the studio apartments. You, which are all different, all have their own uh, little bits of lore, little layout uh, as well. And uh, you also have corporate furnishings, which is three different sets. You got Creative Couture, which is a hundred Eddie premium. Uh, you have apartment affability, five hundred Eddies, expensive. And then you got a word here that I've never seen or used before, but I'm gonna give it a shot. Desirous, did I say it right?
Desirous?
Desirous. Is I, is desirous a word?
Desire, I think it's desirous.
Is it desire?
I didn't write, I did not write the uh, the corporate furnishings that.
Gotcha.
Jay Gray wrote the corporate furnishing section. I wrote the home accessories section.
Yeah.
And the uh, and the apartments, but Jay Gray hit us with that desirous word.
You're gonna do desirous, I'll do desirous and we'll just see what happens, all right? I mean, let us know in the comments. Desirous, the desirous decoration, which is the most expensive.
Now, I gotta read it out. I gotta read it out loud after we drew so much attention to it.
Yeah, please.
Desirous decoration, that's how I'm saying the word. Look at you moving up, moving up in the world. Now, your bed is a headboard. You've upgraded to an actual sofa and the appliances in your kitchen area don't spark when you use them. You've even collected a few original art pieces from small-time local creators. With a little luck, those pieces aren't just a bit of eye candy for your place, but an investment for the future.
Wow.
So you know, I, everyone, everyone has that stage in their life where that's their furniture. I, I see those art pieces behind you.
Mm-hmm.
I see the cool wall. Um. Maybe we all have desirous decoration in our homes.
Yeah, exactly.
All of us.
All of us in our own special way have desire, desirous, desirous decoration.
Yeah, that, that, those words.
And I can imagine uh, there's a lot of people in the Cyberpunk world that have never even seen an apartment. That has that kind of stuff, you know, it's like the appliance works and it's not from like thirty years ago, you know what I mean? So that's fun.
Yeah, this, it's like, it's extra flair uh, for the, the stuff in the apartment. Um. In-home accessories, uh, there are some uh. These are more of our like exec-themed items. They're not joke items, but they are, um, they're kind of. Poking at the uh, how um. You know, uh, these are very night, there's, okay, what's, when you have.
It's called everyday Cyberpunk.
You can spend it, uh, you can spend it any way you want, uh, including on things that you probably shouldn't. And most of these are things that you probably shouldn't spend it on. Some of them are things that you may want. But you might not use in the way they were intended to be used. Um, my favorite about that is the uh, the soundproof, the K-Tech all-purpose soundproofing solution. Now, if you remember the K-Tech from Black Chrome, you will know they make other things.
The Dobermans.
This is the classic example of them creating a problem and solving that problem for your uh, for you. I'm talking, of course, about the Tasmanian Claw. Designed to torture people, so they sell you the torture equipment. Is this gonna get you demonetized?
No. Okay, I'm, I'm green flagged for being tabletop content.
Good, good. Um, your uh, they sell you the torture equipment and then they sell you the soundproof room. They give you both sides of the equation. Let me talk to you about this one. And then one that I like a whole lot, in a different way. Um, K-Tech all-purpose soundproofing solution, a thousand euro bucks per room. Peace and quiet is priceless, but you've got the money to afford it. When you buy our luxury soundproofing service, a K-technician, I love that, I love the term.
Love it. It goes with the name, it's perfect.
K-technician will arrive at your residence sometime within a predetermined twelve hours window. And install our nearly invisible soundproof panels behind the walls of whatever space you wish. With the panels installed, you won't hear the screaming hooligans outside your window ever again, and they won't hear you either. K-Tech soundproofing panels are trusted by highly prestigious corporations like Sawboil to promote security. Peace and ensure the absolute security. Uh, to promote serenity, peace and ensure the absolute security of company secrets in the workplace. So all it does is uh. Listening through a wall protected by K-Tech all-purpose soundproofing solution. Is impossible without amplified hearing cyberware or similar, or a similar technological solution. Te- K-technicians are always late, but still expect a tip of at least twenty euro bucks before they begin work.
Yeah, yeah, cause I, I would, I love role-playing that. It's, oh, I forgot my tools, uh, but you know, I could get some new tools if you can throw me a little.
You're a homeowner. You, you understand what that's about.
It's, I'm not a homeowner, but I do understand it's all. No, I wish, but I will soon, hopefully. Um, but I love, I love this because it gives you a great reason. To have like some kind of murder mystery where a murder happens in a house and then the neighbors never heard it. Because the corporate had this K-Tech all-purpose soundproofing solution. So it's one of those things that the players will be like, why didn't anybody hear this? And then they do an investigation and find out that this was installed.
I see, it's a cover your ass.
Mm-hmm. A way to cover your ass, but also a way to show that maybe the killer knew. That no one would hear, you know, so that means that they know about these very expensive things, so that like. Might bring it down to like, oh, maybe it was another corporate that did this. It wasn't a random act of violence. Maybe it was somebody they knew, you know, so. Uh, you could play around with that kind of stuff. I like that. It's really fun. And of course, on the last page, we have. These handy charts that you can flip to that tell you, that you can roll a D10 on and it gives you all the information you need for everything, random housing.
In case you're the random roll guy, you want to know randomly where I live, I'm sometimes that guy.
Yeah, yeah, cause I can also see that uh, even though like, let's say it's a Militech corporate operative housing. You might live like nearby, you know, and, and, and that area is called the MCOH. Even though you don't live in the facility, you might live on the outskirts of the facility. And sometimes the outskirts can be just as safe or close to as safe. As the place that they're in, because it's like a buffer zone or, or you know, crime and stuff like that.
Right.
So it's a desirable place for people to live near a corporate zone and, and commute out to other places.
So. John John.
Mm-hmm.
There's one more item I wanna, I wanna si- signal out before we start talking about, you know, maybe where is your favorite, where would you live?
Yeah.
Um, and that's, there is a new Sagatari item in here. You know, you know, we don't get new Sagatari's items all the time, so uh, I, I think it's, it's, you gotta put it out there. This is the virtual barbecue by Sagatari.
All right, the Sagatari right here in front of me.
You got the virtual barbecue by Sagatari in front of you?
Uh, yes. Five hundred Eddies.
Why don't you give it a read? I, I, I would love to hear it in your voice.
Well, James, do you like grilling? Hell, yes you do. The only problem is that you've got to, you've got to have a backyard to grill. And you haven't gotten there quite yet, but you will one day and with a. But you will one day, and with a Sagatari virtual barbecue, you can train your future. You can train your future as a master of the flame. Join virtual classes with other grill enthusiasts hosted by real grill masters on your schedule. And keep track of what you've learned using the VBBQ app. When you finally earn that lawn and picket fence, you'll be years ahead of the competition and the talk of the neighborhood. This is a Peloton barbecue, isn't it?
Yeah.
That's crazy. Oh, that's great, dude. Virtual barbecue is a fun multiplayer video game, nothing more. It doesn't really teach you how to grill. Plenty of mostly exec friendships have been started playing it though, and you can't put a price on that, can you? It's, it's for those that wanna role-play having a barbecue, basically. That's the most Cyberpunk dystopian thing I've ever heard in my life.
Look, Ben, it's, it's the step after, it's the step after I have the virtual golf course.
Yeah, or like.
I have the virtual golf course, and afterwards, we're coming over to my place for a virtual barbecue.
Dude, this is like a, a power washing simulator.
Yep, yep, yep.
Uh, dude, that's so cool. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm actually surprised there isn't a barbecue simulator yet.
Well, I mean, fair enough. Uh, they have, I, I will point out that there is a Grill Off with Ultrahand.
Okay, so there is, there is a barbecue.
Game that Nintendo put out.
There is a barbecue simulator, I. That's great.
But uh, it, it's not a true barbecue simi- it's not a barbecue sim- simulator in the vein of Power Wash simulator.
No, no, and it's definitely not a Sagatari virtual barbecue. So you're, you're not gonna get the good stuff if you don't go with the Sagatari. So yeah, that's it. Um, that's, that's it for Corp Con Apps and Studio Apartments Tunes. Unfortunately, we're at the end of the show here, and uh, if you guys have any questions, johnjohnthewise@gmail.com, but in the subject, if you can, Night City Council question, night, something, mention Night City Council in there, so I can easily find it. And we will add it to the list, so I do apologize if we couldn't get to that. We just had so much to talk about, as you can see, obviously with all things going on. And I'm sure we missed things too, um, but on the next one, we'll make sure to answer questions from the community. Other than that, James, is there anything else you wanna tell the folks at home?
Uh, I will, I will say, go to jameshuggames.com, uh, join the newsletter, and uh, I'll send you a free copy of Glance TRPG. It's a playing card TRPG. I made it last week. It's pretty cool. I edited and playtested it with my little brother. Um, and um, other than that, it's uh, it's great to, it's great to see you, John John.
Yeah, it's great to see you too, buddy.
Can't wait to do it next week. Uh, can't wait to do it again next month.
Next month, yeah. We'll do something next week if you want. Hit me up.
Call me, call me.
Uh, alright, other than that, thank you so much for watching Tunes. Night City Council is adjourned. We will see you guys on the next one. Take care. Bye.
Bye.
Alright, we did it.